We on the back. Not yet. Good evening, welcome to the town of April, December fifth planning board meeting. For regular viewers, a normal night is the first Thursday of the month. But the first evening of Hanukkah was on Thursday, so in respect to the holiday, we did Tuesday. That's why we're here. We're waiting for one member to arrive. But we're going to proceed with the meeting. I'd like for the approval of the minute at the end. How we can participate. So Jay, any correspondence we should?
Yep, Tom, can I just call the roll?
Yes, please call and roll.
Joe Cracker? Bob Roach?
Here.
Phil Pat?
Yep.
Colleen Mox? So based on correspondence, I believe she'll be late, but he will be. Mark absent for now. Um, Tom Brown Della?
Here.
Donald Tash? Aaron Robertson? Palmer Urban?
Here.
And Raider?
Then Tom, Tom will participate at the ultimate this evening and he will be able to vote on that. Any other correspondence?
Um, so. Joe, Colleen and I met with a potential applicant yesterday and went over some pre-submission details. And I have been in contact with. John Lyons and Kim Garrison of the. I was advised to not speak on it until um I can speak with John and Ken. He reported.
I didn't. Okay, conflict check, does anybody have a problem with any of these applications or they have? Yeah.
Um, can I? Go back, Phil, were there any board members present on to?
No.
What was that question?
Whether there were any board members present on to?
Oh. All right, we have no more business, everything on the agenda is new business. I'm going to open the public hearing for bro. But I'm going to keep it open until time arrives because I'd like her to participate in the application, so. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So we're gonna. Guess you join it for a little while, so sit tight, folks, we will get you. Poland?
Yes.
Poland.
Wait, sorry.
I'm sorry.
So. We had a sketch, we gave you sketch plan approval. And. You've added, we've asked you to add to the flat.
Correct.
Just bring it to us. Can you give us a brief overview of what you changed?
We've added the note for the. Um agricultural operation. And then we've added that agricultural operation to Jim Murphy's land on the. On the map itself. We removed the bit of the driveway from the three acre, three and a half acre parcel that went over onto the six and a half acre parcel. Added septic and well areas. You changed the wording before the stream area. Is that it?
Both these dwellings exist, right?
Correct.
So there's no instruction involved with this, we're just subdividing.
Yeah, for some line rate, more or less down the middle.
We have this wonderful public hearing.
Um, so at the last meeting, the planning board granted sketch plan approval. Did not make a determination as to whether the application was complete. And declared themselves the agency, so prior to scheduling a public hearing. The planning board should make the determination as to whether. The application is complete and make the determination as to whether it's mine.
Hey. Anybody have any comment? Something like a big promotion? We see prefer.
Um, we don't.
We don't see it. Does everybody think the application is complete, anybody have any concerns, questions? Positions? Phil, you okay?
Yeah.
Makes an important. Yeah, we do some references. On that one, could have two houses on one piece program, we can't sublet.
So it is going in the direction.
So we think the application is correct, so it's complete?
Yeah.
So can I get a motion for that? That, so move. But then. Okay, all in favor?
Five.
All right, so we determined your application is complete. Schedule a public hearing for January?
Um, does it give it as a minor subject?
Can I get a motion? All in favor? Minor subject. Now? Can I get a motion to schedule a public hearing for January with the early.
If the January workday?
Fourth? Fourth, this week, fourth.
Well, if they're watching the schedule of the year in January.
Four. So move. All in favor? All right. So we'll be back in January for the public hearing and check with Jay about the notices and all that.
Okay.
We should have full size of that.
Yeah, I'll have him, but he didn't.
I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Ronnie Brooks? Somebody here for Ronnie Brooks? Hey, we have to buy drawings on this or something.
Um. I did not have it. I need assistance with missions. Um. I was told that some of them retired last Thursday and then I told, was told that we had denied it. Um. You arrived on Saturday and then I was told that it's for the last Monday and it still has non-division. I don't know.
What? You do?
Um, I. I would recommend speaking to the applicant and. Understanding. What's going on. And. Making the determination.
Do you understand we have deadlines?
Well, we had submitted one set of drawings. For the, for the last meeting and then we submitted some revisions and. We thought we, because it was a continuation of the prior discussion. We weren't trying to. Get it ten days ahead, we were trying to just get it. To Jay so that he have it for the meeting.
Doesn't help the board member.
That's okay.
So do you, did you get the drawings?
You have them.
Well, I have one set here, but the set we sent you.
Uh, no.
Because we sent by US post office express mail. You last week.
You have the tracking on?
I, I have an email with the tracking and we, we sent it, uh. The first time, you'll, you'll get a kick out of this, the first time we sent it, they came back and said, oh, that address doesn't exist. Okay. They sent it back to us, we sent it again. And we have tracking information that uh they, they were delivering it uh Monday. So they, they were supposed to deliver to, that's what we were told.
And it's still short.
And can you check the tracking right now because? I have not received it, I sent. An email.
Required a signature, it's not on somebody here.
On.
I, I mean, I don't know if we sent it, we sent it to required, but.
About five twenty seven PM. On December fifth asking. Aaron to. Any updates on the plans being delivered?
Well, I can check my email. See, because he, he, he told me that we had the tracking. So. I was under that assumption, I can.
Well, at this point, we don't have any.
He hasn't.
Yeah, okay.
We did send electronic. You have the PDF.
Yes, I do have that.
Who sent that? That was last week.
Um, and the updated EAF.
And we said that as well.
By email.
Something like this would probably be the hard copy.
All right, well, not to delay the meeting, why don't you show us what you've done and we can. Be familiar with the changes and what else you've added.
Well, I can, I can tell you basically. The. One of the things that we talked about was the idea of. Showing the app.
I think there was a question on fire access.
Yeah, so. Well, so this is. Hold the subject. Yeah, you, you had this, we had these drawings last time. So basically. No, everybody had a set last time.
There was.
Yeah, we got a full set, everybody had a full set. It stayed the same, all we did. Was. On the second page. We show. The pathway in between. Because there was an issue about, well, if you were coming up here, can you get up to the back of it? And on the second page. We highlighted. The lane or. Yeah, the lane. We put it in yellow to show that in fact, from there you can easily get up there. That's, that's, that was the main change to the, to, to the drawing.
Are you considering that the fire access road?
Yeah, you could get, you could get a piece of fire equipment up there. You could drive a fire truck up there.
That's you or um.
It's supposed to be twenty feet wide.
No, it's more, it's more than twenty feet wide and one thing to just remember about a solar array, it's not flammable. It's, it's, it's all metal, it's all metal and. There's no wood involved, there's no flammable materials. But you do have the electrical fuses in, in each one and, you know. So that was the main change we made on it, we also clarified some things on the uh, uh, the EAF. Um. Just to be a, a, a. Like we had this bath habitat area as a. A, a protected species, well, in fact, it's not, so you know, we had to make a few little technical changes like that.
Today, uh, mark on the plan, the width of the road?
Excuse me?
Uh, with the road, you're talking about the pathway. They highlighted on the plan, can they go over and just mark them with it?
Yeah, we can put them with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's just, it's a can drawing, we can, we can put the width in.
Yeah, just so we have some reference.
And we also had a question that we had. An answer from about where this fell in the code.
Um, so.
We did get a response.
And just. Yeah, just give it a roll to the planning board that didn't classify it as um.
Yeah, I guess the question is.
Well, there was an issue about whether you actually had jurisdiction. The planning board itself. And, and I, as I understand, Jay was going to have a discussion with somebody.
Building inspector, that's what you're asking about. The right of form.
So article three, page twenty six, ground mounted and freestanding use for an agricultural. Farm that's the best, especially used for many needs approval. That's from as dated.
So the process is we need to. Review this for the special use permit.
Yep.
And that's the paperwork we filled out. We, we, we approached it that way.
What's the? Process, the special funding, is there a problem here?
So, um. Tom also had a question, the width of the road and. You had.
Oh, yeah, there was on the last time it gets about the uh, there's always more required, I mean, two percent reflectivity in the panels. So we were bringing a thing down to give us some of it. The family, so whatever.
Yeah, so the um. The specification sheet that's included in the plan set shows that the panels um are, are coded. To have a, to be non-reflective.
Okay, I, I know you said that last time, but we, I think we. So it's going to be some reflectivity, so we just need something to go over and say that it's less than eighty percent.
That it complies with the requirements and you three percent is what you're presenting.
So I can highlight that section of the spec sheet. That, that, that deals with that or get some additional information.
Yeah, it, it's got.
And it reflects.
Kind of. Mentioned two percent, so we're not capable of doing. Whatever calculations to convert something to something that.
But, but it's not.
Say it on the table.
Say it on the table.
There's a lot of material, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the heck, they weren't doing the spec sheet of the town.
Yeah, well, I can send you a note about that with the spec sheet attached. To address it specifically.
Yeah, that's how we look at it and just say, here it is.
Yeah, I can do that.
And I had one other question, you'd also mentioned that uh this system was going to meet a hundred percent of the farm needs. Um, can you give us any documentation of what farm uses versus what this is producing, so is this, in other words, uh?
Yeah, sure, we, we, we do that calculation uh in, and uh with. With Rick Osowski, who is the owner of the farm, who's here, we went through their electric bills. And we also went through the output calculations for the array and that's how we, we got to the size we did. That was the whole idea and I can share those calculations.
And, and, and I just want to make sure it's like some side or two getting into an industrial silver kind of. Arrange, it's, it's being sized appropriate to the use with. A plan, you know, there's obviously some planned future capacity probably built in there too, but just to make sure that it's appropriate for.
Yeah, we can give you that, that's, that's no problem, because that was part of our calculation, because we had to determine. You, you know, in the, in this area here, you have room for. Something small, something large, you know, so we. Came up with this size because. The five hundred kilowatt system will meet a hundred percent. Of the current electric usage.
Right, right, it'd just be nice to know what, what that.
Yeah, okay. Sure, I'll give you the calculations.
You can go up to a hundred and a. You can settle back to ten percent. And on the, on the fire access road, whether it's your engineer, they should review the fire code. I don't know how long it is, but every five hundred feet you need to turn out and you need some way to turn around it to get. But then whoever looked at it and looked at the five, the state five, I suppose.
Okay.
Has to be twenty feet wide, every five hundred feet you need to turn out and we should be able to turn the right circle around. The other. Thoughts or concerns at this point?
Yeah, yeah. There's also a thing about the paint color of the panel, so it's all the same paragraph.
Yeah, if you could bring a sample of the glass. Whatever it is.
You want to see the solar panel we're going to use?
Yeah, not the whole panel, you don't have to bring a whole panel.
Well, that's how they come. You don't bring a part of them.
Oh, you can get a little piece of glass. That must be a common question, the reflectivity. Jay, what's our next step for?
So. Is the application.
Well, we haven't seen the EAF. The EAF complete, your opinion? And I'll be struggling with some going back and forth.
In my opinion, I would say that it's still. Contains some inaccuracies, but I did not review it because it. Arrived. On my desk by email yesterday.
Well, no, we sent you a version of it last week, we got some feedback from you and we sent you correct, a corrected version.
And can you be clear on when last week you sent?
So that was. Uh, my staff person, Aaron, who's the PB designer, sent. The uh, EAF back to you with the corrections you wanted.
So the most recent. That I received was yesterday. At. Eleven twenty two AM. On or around eleven twenty two. And I have not.
Well, you have that and you're on.
Um, and there's, there's no hard copies and planning board still wants rendition.
Would that be sent to man for review or?
That's, that's something that you should.
I understand, yes, but what is your recommendation? Do you think you can review it or should we?
This is the short EAF?
Yeah, probably.
I can, I can review the short EAF, but. Um, based on kind of the pattern that has already been established, I would say. Um. The planning board should. Make sure that all the documents and everything that's needed. Is before them before setting a public hearing.
So. If I understand that, that means I have to send documents back to you, they have to review them and then we would have a public hearing? Delaying this another month?
Well, that's delaying it, the process, the process, yeah, it's kind of delayed the process.
Well, it's a delay from the point of view of trying to get something built, that's all.
I. You know, I still don't have full size maps and I don't have seven copies.
Yes, I appreciate that, but. Assuming we got you that.
Two weeks ago?
Well, we didn't get it to you two weeks ago, but.
And that's a problem, that's.
Right. We have nothing to review, anything secondary to review.
So we'll get you the uh seven sets, we'll get to the um. Information about the fire pad. And the uh reflectivity.
That should all be on the seven sets, should all be revised so that we have a complete package and we can declare.
And, and then you'll declare, hopefully you'll be in the EAF. And hopefully at the next meeting you could declare it complete. And could at that meeting, we get approval for the project?
No. We got a scheduled public hearing.
And what's the process of terms of having a public hearing?
Notices in the paper, we mail, notice a mail, we send a mailing to the neighbors within.
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet. And we come here and.
Neighbors within five hundred feet?
From what corner to the prop.
And um. Because of the location, the town plan place will also be notified.
So. How long after the county, the meeting, the next meeting would we have the public hearing? So that would be the February meeting?
Yeah.
And the public hearing would be here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We have a public hearing tonight. So. We get, we get everything in order, get it to Jay in timely fashion.
Well, we thought we had, but the post office didn't cooperate with us.
Several members in two alternates and we need to be able to look at the drawing prior to the meeting. And.
Well, I apologize, that was my fault because I had assumed, because you had a set drawings at the first meeting, that. We had done that, but we'll, we'll send another set.
Did we set up an escrow for man?
That's, that's up to you.
Well, you think you need our system, that, that basically, we'll set it up if you think we need. You want to have a second set on it, look at?
That's, that's something that's planning board.
Yeah, I say yes, absolutely, it's a big, it's a big.
A thousand dollars would be enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
I need a motion to set up an escrow for the purpose of our planning consultant review.
Motion.
Second. Second, okay, all in favor? All right, I see a map. Okay, just to make.
So we're supposed to submit a thousand dollars prior to the next meeting?
No. ASAP. Like as soon as you can.
So we sent the five hundred, you already got that?
An application. This is an escrow that we're allowed to establish. For our consultants to review. Basically, the EAF.
The EAF.
And the draw.
We need to refund the whole parts we don't need.
It's an hourly thing.
And this consultant is reviewing the environmental, they're not reviewing the technical aspects of the solar?
Right, no, it's just like the road, the, the placement, she's not going to review the efficiency of the panel, how you wire it or anything.
Let's, let's just take a look at the zone, just on the solar part, because there's a thing about paint color and reflectivity, so that's why you know it's there and what we need to respond to.
Sure. Okay. Anything else?
I don't know, Jay, do we, do we cover all our motions that we need to make?
Let's see, there's something about grasses, that's. Maybe we have. But the grasses under the panels, but.
I think there's nothing else.
Okay.
I would, I would say review the. Site plan submission requirements again. Third day. All of those have been submitted. Um. Digital. And hard copies. Prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, Jay will explain, he has to check and everything.
I mean, two weeks prior to the. I mean, two weeks prior to the next meeting.
Then you gotta do is the better, two weeks is the drop, drop dead deadline.
So if I could get it to you next week, that would be okay too? Okay. All right. Anything else?
Anything else procedurally, Jay?
You wanted to clarify yourself, lead agency?
Yes, can I get a motion?
What motion, lead agency?
All in favor? Any else? Okay, we're good. Well, hopefully, see you next month and get, get stuck to it some more overall.
Okay, very good.
Okay, hi, I'm Jeff Musso, he's one of the architects on the project.
Yeah, multiple architects?
We have two. And Kimberly Ackert, the lead architect. Um, and uh, so again, I'm Paul, I'm Jeff Musso, Paul Ratchardi is the director who's on the Zoom. And then, so um. In a nutshell, we, we did appear before you guys, uh, maybe late spring last year. Yeah, Kimberly did that, was just, just to sort of introduce the project to us, but introduced the project to you. It has been moving along and here we are today, uh, initiating a special use permit application. We are, the, the plan is to take thirteen twenty-six, which is a house. An existing house, immediately to the uh, south of the Opera House. Thirteen twenty-six, County Route Seven, and uh, convert it into a mixed-use property. A, a three-bedroom, two-bedroom house. That will be used for guest artists and interns, as a resident intern. Uh, so that we can provide housing, that's a big hu- that's a big issue for us every year. Finding housing for the folks that are working with us. And uh, and connected to that is a, a separate space. But part of the same building, that will be a uh, community room office. For uh, for uh, resident artists doing work at the space. And also for our many, we do a lot of community workshops, that'll become a space used, that will use for playwriting workshops, songwriting workshops, that kind of thing. So it's a multi-purpose, sort of multi-mixed use. Will become a mixed-use property. There was a bit of, there was a bit of uh, go around and trying to figure out exactly, it's, it's sort of a unique situation for Agrom. Uh, there was a, so there was a bit of go around. With the building department, trying to determine what existing. Use exists within the zoning code. Uh, that this could fall under, and it was determined that there is a, there is an existing use for. It's like private school, religious school. Boarding school and performing arts school. So, because it had the boarding piece to it as well as performing arts, it felt like that was a pretty close alignment and one that we were comfortable with. In terms of making it, you know, pursuing this application with the use. We do know, we need to go to, before the ZBA. For an area variance. Uh, as part of the design, there is a porch that we want to build off. To the uh, north. In the space that is between the, the, that house and the Opera House. That will become, you know, in a way, a gathering area for audiences and just to sort of create more space for, for folks to. Be hanging out before and after shows, uh, as well as for the folks that are living in the house or it's, any time of the house, we're taking a class in that, in the, in the community room. That's for a setback, correct?
We, we were presented with this drawing, what does this have to do with what you're talking about?
Well, the, the building, you know, that, that's the house. And, yeah. And you can even see that, in terms of the front setback. The, the southwest corner of the house actually is like within, like, a hair of the twenty feet required. For a front setback from the center line of Route Seven.
This is the existing building.
This is the existing building, correct? Yeah. It is already not in form, in that regard. I mean, the exa- yeah, I mean, the existing building, that one little corner of it, the southwest corner of it, as you're coming up. From the intersection. Is within the, the twenty feet of that center. But the porch that we wanted, the, the house itself, in terms of the side setback. Is, is uh, conforming, but we do want it, we, we did want to add a porch. As I just mentioned, that would bring it within the, within the, within ten feet of the property.
That's out on the front, basically, the county route, so.
Correct, and to, and to the, and to the.
But otherwise, the footprint of that building is not changed.
The footprint is not changed.
So we got two things on, something for the Opera House and something.
The Opera House is not really part of this permit application.
That they ramped to the opera.
That is correct.
So that's not part of this.
There will be a ramp on. There is a, there is a ramp that will be connected to thirteen twenty-six. But the ramp project that you're seeing associated with that particular.
Please submit, make it clear that this is. Lighten it up or just say existing or.
I think in the bigger set of drawings, it has that.
Those might have gone to this EBA.
This is in front of the ZVA at present?
So which um?
The permits at drawings for this, the AMX project.
So you say that there is a permitted use for uh.
Private school. Boarding, religious school, before we go to school or boarding school. It's every, I pointed to, it does, it does require us to get a special.
That, that's how they can go over it, by coming into the. And can see the, the house right now, it's how many bedrooms?
Uh, three, I guess.
Yeah, my, my one concern. And are you expanding the use and do we need to consider the impact on the subject?
The septic, I mean, the usage on the septic is not, it's supposed to be any greater, and we did do a septic repair on it. So that it is in, you know, relatively decent shape.
But the existing, you know, keeping the bedroom the same, that's usually what they go by. So that, that's.
The bedroom usage, I mean, it's actually, we, I, I think there were four originally, and now there are three. There would be a full kitchen. And uh, two baths in the house.
This would be a short-term stay?
Yeah, I mean, it.
Less than thirty days.
I would say it's, in some cases, there would be artists or interns that were, particularly artists that might be in the space. For less than thirty days. But we see it more as like a, a, a place for the, like our intern company, that would be here for three months or so, it's like for summer season or fall season.
Can I, can I clarify your question? Ed has spoken with Nan and you about this project extensively, um. I think. You first. Brought it to everybody's attention. About a year ago, or over a year, year ago now. It was first classified by Ed. Based on Nan's recommendation as a, in hotel motel. Ed went back to Nan and they. Designated it as this use, it is not being classified as a short term. And that's a determination by the zoning board.
You have to pick and draw its use and code. And if it's like. A short, less than thirty days, there's some issues that may have to be dealt with. We are designing a commercial-grade sprinkler system to build. I didn't, I didn't want to be the bearer of bad news, but you're aware. Of the, of the multiple ten thousand dollar thing. Okay.
So, so going back to the question, um. The permit said, um. I will work with you and Kim, I had sent you an email today asking if it would be on, I will go through. And I will, um. Make sure that we get everything that's needed. Because there are going to be some map revisions that are needed on this project and. While um, that sheet is helpful, it should have. You know, a separate ZBA sheet and a separate planning board sheet. I think, um. Going through the procedural stuff, you can. Declare lead agency and.
They may have done that, right?
The ZBA is referring to a different application. There.
Are they looking at the house?
No. This is not yet.
We will be going before the ZBA deal with the house, but the ZBA, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So. The way, the way it works, the planning board can do. A directive referral to this EBA. On special use permit application. You have the ability. To look at that map and see that it requires a very.
We don't have most of numbers here, but we should have a block plan with a zoning cable and. So see, what we're, what we're. What actually could be varied.
Right, what you should do right now is. Declare yourselves lead agencies.
Okay, as long as this is not in front of the ZBA, they may have done it already.
Not yet, because it was referred to the planning board by Ed with input from.
Do we know what Dan's, Dan's input was?
Was the. Um, the use. Classification.
Okay, they're in agreement, we don't know what that is, that should be on the phone too.
No, it is, I mean, where we landed with Nan is this, the one we're, we're talking about right now.
Yeah, tell us what it is specifically, you know, the drawings need more.
Well, I, I am a little confused, because I did bring the permit said drawings to you. Who distribute, I thought should be distributed, like seven or eight, what oversight, you know, large scales.
Was that the ones that I? Asked for. Them from you and then you got them on the Saturday?
I believe so, yeah.
Those went to the ZBA.
Okay, so they.
That was, that was my mistake, I had. I had asked for a set. For this EBA, because this EBA meeting was ahead of the planning board meeting. So that was my mistake, um.
I just want to make sure they have what the information you need.
So this is. This is what you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about like a seventeen, seventeen. You know, like a big staple.
Okay, yes, you do.
This is it here?
Yes.
Okay, so this is all. Well, I want, I mean, not wrong.
So, what, what are you doing in the Opera House?
In terms of uh. We've, construction, uh, well, we, we are being, like I said, we are in front of the ZBA. Because of, of the need for an area variance for the handicap ramps, uh, that we're putting in there, that bag looks familiar.
I apologize.
We tried.
It's such so much with us.
No worries, it's all fine, it's all good. Um, and if there's, I mean, if there are real technical questions or Scott is probably better equipped to handle them than I.
But I think his question is still on this septic and, and just because. If you were building this building new, for example, what would it be sized that? Something that had, had same number of bedrooms, you're having more people coming in and out of it.
Right, um, so in terms of the repair, pat pendergrass too, I, it's an.
Care, but I guess, how do we? Confirm if I had this. The, the, the correct size of the use is what you're getting.
The pendergrass, uh.
Yeah, I think.
County have to do that? Not as a repair, so he certified what he, what he prepared, and it's at least a thousand gallons. Uh, if not more, which would support more than three bedrooms minimum.
Yeah, they don't, normally we get approval from the county.
I don't. So.
Well, yeah, I, I understand, but.
Actually, my knowledge, Columbia County doesn't do that.
Okay.
So, um. Would you like?
If, if we, if we need to have somebody's. Those bikes and passengers for the.
Yeah, we can, why don't we get you more information about what?
Okay, okay, because I understand the work of issue, I just don't know how many more people. And, and if you have a function there, you know, like, let's say you have a, a party there and I go, or is that? Regularly happens, but.
Right.
You know, it's in some way to judge it.
I got you.
Ed and I can also work together. And get a letter where they would not. That they would not, um. Do anything with regard to a change of use, because I have seen that somebody has. A different application.
I doubt we'll talk about hearings on that.
Okay. I think, I can clarify, I can work with Ed to clarify that. Columbia County Department of Health would not. Um, do requirements for. Uh, change of use. But then you should have. Have something.
In a basic, I mean, I think what we're looking at is a cover sheet. Where you got this nice chart. And all the ends are variances, so. That perhaps. The nice chart on the cover sheet is only. All the ends are variances that you need, yes, correct. My suggestion. We can talk about it, we read the sentence, it is only for get the variances. I mean, no use.
Yeah, that's true.
So, something good for the community, I think. You know, we just forward back to the zoning board. Get the variances and then you get them, you come back, if they don't bring them all and you modify, you can. We'll go forward from there, I mean, I, you know, obviously a complete set of. But, yeah, yeah, I mean, the only. Is the capacity of the septic. No, septic's a funny, in the end, you have to look at, they all work, but. In a month of a tank's use, now it's spilling out with snot.
We don't want to hear about that. We'll, we'll get more information.
Yeah, I, you know, you're gonna take. You know, you're gonna take a house that's been unoccupied for.
Uh, just two or two years, I think, two through the two.
Yes, but if it hadn't been used by a normal. Family, and you got. Three or four bedrooms here and everybody's ready to be showering and washing dishes. I mean, my only concern is that it doesn't. Put on it and then. With an existing house, the variances, and you got a port that approaches, I don't know. Beyond the property or.
Not beyond, but within the septic. No, so within the stuff like the next.
Well, the other porch is beyond the property. Right, Mr. Architect?
Uh, no, no.
Last one this drawing shows. The plot line on the first sheet shows the property line going through the cabin floor. First sheet. Right for maturity. In covered porch. The property line? Okay, that's. Right here, yeah. Well, this was, this is the existing. This is the.
I'm just saying.
Yes, this is the, this is a non-conforming condition. Yes, you're, we're going to repair this in light, we're not going to change this. The non. That, that's something that lions may, usually when we find this condition, there's a licensing resolution. If this town, if this is a town road.
That's county.
Cause I could edit that. I mean, that's the, that little bit right there is posing. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, no, I get it existing, but it's a liability, so somebody to hit the fortune in the right away.
That's from, yeah, that's kind of some legal consequence.
That force is coming off. Right? It's covered from porch on the front, it's covered, and that we're ready to replace the, it's stupid. Decept, no worse than that, made it five, they actually do a small.
I just been trying to get hold of some county B P W. B P W for. He, he wants feedback.
Yeah.
But this is good job we're doing, obviously.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
We're proving it, and known to the road given into a right away, that is a liability to us. Usually, you know, you get a licensing agreement from whoever's got control of.
Oh, no.
Saying, yeah, we understand, we don't continue.
So, um. We did, we did sketch plan. Aspro. Z B A.
Yeah, okay. I get a motion to. Some, some of it, we all agree that you can see on this project.
My motion will be second.
More favor. So we'll, we then. Say, what's the sketch plan? We. Um. Get a motion. On. Sketch plan approval. Addressing the porch approachment that there's a determination to be made.
Wait.
But.
Do that conditions on the D B A.
Can we do that without more information?
Yeah, that's gonna come. I want to move them through the zoning board, then they're gonna come back.
So maybe. Don't.
You don't need to do sketch plan, you send them to the zoning, what's not, you sketch. Makes it simple.
Um. Do you need to? Collect unit. Keep in mind that. The planning board is only reviewing the end.
What?
The planning board is only reviewing the ends.
Yeah.
The house.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, but it's at the end.
So what does Nan look like? Only really.
You guys are not.
Is it town, getting some money to be?
Not.
You want to set up an escrow? Well. What, what for purposes? I guess the man is determined to use to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, I've done that, but it would be upon. The. Subject issue. Any site plan. Uh, specially use review. And potentially we will.
I, I, my initial vote was the list that they came back from the D B A and that. You set it up and it doesn't make news. Do you think so fair number? Can I get a motion for an escrow? Second. All in favor? We're gonna set up a small escrow. We can get all the advice we need.
Right.
Refer to zoning. Then. Um. New motion, we can make a recommendation. Positive, negative, or neutral. Motion.
Yeah, sure.
All in favor?
Right.
So send a note, a letter to the zoning board that we're recommending a positive. But aware of dealing with the septic and the porch or sheets that. Clarify.
Okay, and, um. I will.
Be in front of the.
Decision.
I, I will put you. On the agenda for this for December eighteenth, which is.
They have a meeting on Monday?
Uh, Z B A goes. That's not this coming Monday, that's the fall.
Who said the A?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, I'm sorry. Here's no work.
And can I just, just so clear, clear, the portion question is the one on the front of the building that we're talking about on the side. This one.
You wanna?
No, I can see, I can see.
The, the property line.
Yep, we got it.
Common and old stuff, but we just have to. We have to deal with it, we know, so that we don't. Anything happens, but we're playing more proof that we saw. We're gonna sue everybody.
All right.
So I expect some of your trips. And the fortress in the right way. Of you suing the county. The county should be aware of it. At least that's my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but. All right, any other? Housekeeping to do? You don't need to say. No.
Not at this time.
Okay.
For the.
All right, this. Good luck, hopefully we'll see you back there.
Thanks very much.
And, um. Yes, I guess we're not gonna see.
What, what are we researching?
Well, I, you're the. Public hearing. And there's something. Those are the odds. All right. Um. Well. Go back for a couple of hearings. Too much, um. A little bit of an old on you. For the general public, the public hearings, what your attendings and deals. Don't worry. Okay. Well, I've done everything that I was asked, I, uh. Had three on the board come to the, uh. Walk around, I personally walked them all around the whole thing, showed them. To the general public, tell us what you're doing. Okay, what I'm doing is I have. Dividing off. Seven. Plus or minus acres from my home. So that I can sell my farm, which is adjacent to my home property. And I'm asking for a subdivision to separate my house from the barn complex. Going through the board of health approval. First meeting with. Our board here. And they made changes on the map as was requested. Like surveyor came and. Did a physical visit of the whole property, sure, everything has, nothing has changed since last time. And that brings us here today. Um. So is there anybody on?
Uh, there are, but nobody's asked any questions.
If anybody has anything to add or. Question. Um, now's the time, anybody in the audience have any issues or would like to? Ask any questions on the application? See, no one here, no one, back to the board. Okay. Or do we have any concerns between this before we gave them a set for approval? Um. Any thoughts, Jay, did you have anything you want to bring us up to before? Um, or?
So. I did. I was made aware of. A title search. A joint in property also owned by the applicant. And it does show two sheds on the property line.
So what's the concern with the shed?
Are the sheds there?
Excuse me?
Are the sheds?
Uh, no, no.
The shed?
There's almost one shed. That'll be bad on the. Um. That, that is on the neighbor's property. These two sheds are not there. That's long ago.
Maybe we can see it.
Shit, alright. This is the neighbor's property.
Yeah, well, that's the property one, they're showing that shed.
Well, it's, it's not.
That's the man, I mean, the surveyor is not acting. That's what it showed. It was a. Anything else?
So I feel like we got. Problem three. Cause we have, this, this one we are operating, and these two here aren't there.
No, this is, this is many months ago. They were gone when I moved here.
Yeah, I think she's just trying to get a, an accurate.
No, I understand that, I understand that. Um. This piece is going with that.
Yeah, I think this is probably the bigger. Containment, it's a straddle.
Right. But they, they, like I said, that, they, they are not. They're not there in our.
Yeah, we should, in the survey, just update this wrong. These stamped it. That's amazing. That, the thing, right?
So, well, because the guy stamps his plans and it's. Yeah, they just gotta erase them from the, the legal, from the matter.
Okay.
Still existing.
Is the fact that they are. We're not, they're not there. You know, cause they hold your other. Wait, this one's gone.
Yeah, you were saying something at the back of that.
And then. On the. South of. The. Our existing parcel, is there a wire fence or stone wall? At the south.
Coming out, that's the house? Back property line?
Yeah.
I agree.
It's just.
It's just like.
An old snow wall over there, so.
There is this time on.
There may have been at one time, there's nothing there now, goes right out to the field of my neighbor.
So then, that should be changed.
It's. It's the very bottom corner of the, of the walkway four or four S. I mean, sometimes those stone walls, we would just be like. The remnants of stone in the ground, you know, it's a fence and. But yeah, and that is on.
That's already been brought up before, I've posted. Already scheduled. I mean, that's the way, that's the way I bought the property.
It's not a question, I had you, whether it's a question of the drawing back.
The drawing of the photo.
The way you're telling me is I have to go back to the surveyor and then get these all changed?
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh.
Can I just ask a question on Bill's point? Why is this coming up now and not the several other times?
And before you.
Yeah, but.
They didn't do the sidewalk until.
They, they hadn't done the sidewalk and.
There was, she's this on the sidewalk, she saw this on the map.
Yeah, this was not a question on the sidewalk.
Right, when the final map? Come in.
These are the final.
The only change from the last map was that, um. Mister Crumble here couldn't see, we had to make something bigger. That was the only change from the last time we were here. And we did that.
These items are a result of the building department making us aware and. They were seen on the site, not, they were seen, not seen on the sidewalk, so. What we heard from the building department is being verified by the members that are on the sidewalk, so.
And the. And the, and the. Yeah.
And when was the building department, when did they bring this up? Yeah.
Honor about Saturday, December second.
Say that again?
December second.
December second, they knew about.
The same day of the sidewalk.
There is a note here, if you look on the thing, that says if at any time tax laws. Yeah, there's a little bit of note. Uh, right next to the shed, just to the left of the sheds, it said. If any time tax laws are no longer home by the same party, you should, I mean, move to the existing step out of there. And they're like, yeah, but. Saying, is that enough, is that enough for us to go?
The, the survey is supposed to show present conditions and the surveyor is certifying that those are. The existing condition.
Well, how about this, so we can? If we close the public hearing. And the items that we discuss are moved. Make them back and I'll find the map with the advice. That.
I'm, I'm.
I'm good with that, yeah, absolutely.
Anyways, with that. Remember, I mean, yes, we'll hear. You get the maps correctly. Get them reprinted. We'll close the public hearing and we'll approve it subject to the drawing is being corrected. The exact corrections that you want are.
The, uh. The survey must reflect existing condition.
Right, on this particular.
On the entire map.
So these are in question, and there was something back here, what?
Sheds in the stone wall, correct?
And it, well, it's a little fence thing, yeah, just take off the fence.
Was it?
Was it said?
Right, that's the part, right.
Well, maybe at one point in time, maybe, but not since I've been here.
Well, this was done a while ago, but this was done twenty four years ago, so maybe it was there twenty four years ago. And the surveyor shouldn't walk the site and, uh. Picked up the.
All right, so do me a favor, let me, can I have this map?
It's yours.
All right, yeah, let's just, let me, let me mark that, so that I can. Accurately, since I have, surely you got something like, and right up here. Okay, so what we want is. This area here.
Right, take off the fence, yes, well, I guess they confirmed that's there.
Confirm what is, what is a concern that?
What it shows is, it shows a stone wall and the, and the.
Well, how, how are we gonna know?
I can't.
But, but say that it has to reflect the existing.
Yes, that's, but I think that.
So that's a basic, that's an over mode.
Yes.
That's reflect existing condition.
Whatever's on that map, that'd be true or not.
All right, so that and that.
And then you got the two sheds. The three sheds.
We're talking about this.
And then the one higher up.
And hopefully about that.
Right, right.
Okay.
And whatever went on back there.
And whatever went on back.
Which is just, he's gotta take out the double you and the.
Right. Okay. Well, hopefully I'll have this stuff, wait, do I have, wait till next meeting for this? No.
No, we bring them updated.
Bring them up. You sound like.
So let's prove that it's unconditional.
Yeah, we wanna put that on the map.
So stay within fifteen days. And then, that way. If the map hasn't been outdated. Planning. I. Right, the subdivision. And then it doesn't run foul of.
All right, so basically, I have to make this map. Mirror exactly what is there today. You got.
With, with the exception of the proposed septic. Which is the field that's sort of better.
Isn't that, uh? The only thing that needs to change on this. Was the accuracy of the board. That's here, from high to down.
They're not there, just take them away.
But never there, whatever's there is now. It's not there.
Just need a little.
Okay. We just wanna qualify the timeframe.
So, are, is the planning board comfortable closing the public?
Absolutely, um, there's nobody on Zoom.
Yeah.
Everybody's, I, I.
Okay, it's not confirmed by me. So maybe back my. Sorry, I got dinner number two. So. So number three. So we're all good?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta make some motion.
Well, I, I.
One favor?
All right, all right, okay, the public hearing is both.
Conditions on. Motion to approve with condition.
Motion to approve, effective as a condition upon the map. Being updated to reflect. The current condition.
Correct.
Within.
Within.
Fifteen.
Fifteen days.
Oh.
Yeah.
Let me have it forty in the week.
Perfect, you have copies of that, I need that to the rest of the side. One favor?
Yeah, you have copies.
Um, yes.
Yeah. You can take me back if you want to.
Okay. And then. For, for your motion, um. Are. Are the pins on? The property. Currently, or was the surveyor waiting to put the pins in until? The pins in.
Property line. Oh, yeah.
So then, once he signs and stands. You will have to file the subdivision maps with the county within sixty days.
Okay. So after this, after the whole process. Uh, once I get these back to you, and this becomes the law. How long does it take for the rest of it to happen?
Well, as soon as I can get here.
As soon as.
How is that? If you get them here for Saturday, I'll come Saturday and it's on.
No, but I mean, as far as what we're asking.
I don't know what the county takes, they got, you, you won't have the consummated subdivision until the county. Give you back.
Right there. So we, we won't know what that is, I think.
Your, your surveyor. Is generally the surveyor file, what's called the flag, that's the flag, he has the file that's.
Okay.
So, after we sign it, I don't know, if you're taking the numbers, they're taking it, they probably can give you a readout on what their timeframe.
Okay.
That has to go, you know, on the, on the, the distribution, with other stuff. That has to go with it, so your surveyor should be.
Okay.
That end is, we signed the map, and then the rest.
All right, thank you so much. Casey, good one.
So, any other business? So just as a. I'll give the minutes, the minutes. Minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Changes? Concerns? Like that?
Okay, but I don't see any, I think the changes were made, that was the.
Does that get a motion?
No. Prove to prove.
And just, um, was sorry the colleague. Didn't hear for her last meeting, I think everybody knows she's. Going to be on the town board, and, um. She's been an integral part of the planning board for many years, in fact, when I got on the board, probably fifteen or more years ago. He was the chairman of the board, so. In actions, I'd like to thank her first.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Oh, my gosh, absolutely.
Absolutely, gonna miss it. That being said. Yes. That poor people. That being said. Um, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, and see you next year. So gonna get a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Exactly.
One favor? I, very good, thank you.
I like that. It's always a.
I know.